Okay. It's 6 o'clock. Everybody's ready? We'll call the meeting to order. Smack dab at 6:00. That's fantastic. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for being here. We're going to start with additions and deletions to the agenda. We have a deletion in Old Business. B, the principal report. We're going to wait until January when Greg Frost and Rob?
Rob Evans from the Vermont Security Center.
Security Center can be here with us. So we will continue with that, but not tonight.
Abby has a hand.
Oh, sorry.
She may have an addition or deletion.
Go ahead, Abby.
Yes, please. I'd like to make two possible additions. One would be regarding FWS and the floor remodeling project. I think that can go under Old Business. And we have discussed this next topic, but it'd be super quick. News and notes. So I don't know if we want to put that in Old Business or not.
Yeah.
Okay. And I know. Thank you, Abby.
Fuel oil.
Yeah, Russ wanted to add to New Business. It would be E, a discussion about fuel oil. Anything else?
Bob's got his name.
Uh, Bob.
I'm not sure which is appropriate. I just, I don't, can't necessarily stay the whole night, but I wanted to take an opportunity to say hello and everything. I don't know if that's under maybe public or Old Business. I'm not sure, but I just wanted to do a quick introduction.
Members of the public. Yeah, great, great. Well, unless anybody has any other additions, deletions, then yes. Let's go to Mr. TiVo.
Oh, right now. Beautiful. Right, so I just have not had a chance to meet a lot of board members from Wyndham, and I just wanted to introduce myself. Some of you know me as the principal at Leland and Gray, but obviously you've probably heard that as of July 1, I'll be taking over Bill's position. And been taking this opportunity throughout the winter to kind of make appearances at the board meetings, the different districts, to just pop in, say hello, introduce myself, and also just to say that if there's, you know, if there's matters that you wish me to be in the loop on, or if there's things that you would like to make sure I understand or know about before July, please don't hesitate to reach out to me. I have the normal wyndhamcentral.org email address, which you can find on the website at Leland and Gray, or Bill can pass along my other contact information as well. But mostly just wanted to say hello and appreciate the vote of confidence from the board to appoint me to superintendent, and I'm looking forward to working with you guys.
Great. Thank you, Bob. That was a great.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
I was so excited. I skipped over correspondence because I know that this is big news just for everybody to have somebody just continuing all the good work that's happening with this supervisory union. So while we're at Members of the Public, anybody else at this time? Peter, do you have everybody's name?
It looks like I do.
Okay.
Sarah, is that Edelman?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Any other members of the public at this time? Obviously, we can always, you know, you can chime in whenever you want. Okay, if not, let's go to correspondence. We did receive a letter from a resident, Bob Bingham, regarding the elementary school budget. And obviously, our budget that's, we're trying to figure out right now for this year and then the years prior. It's a pretty lengthy letter that we're going to scan for Peter. It comes with a couple of charts. So just to be, it'd be a lot to try and go through it all right now, and I think it might make Peter a little nuts, and this is his last night, so we don't want to do that to him. But it does go over the budgets over the past few years. Bob has spoken with Lori Garland. He's looked through.
Letters being written and read in the minutes.
Yeah, we're going to attach it to the minutes, Russ, but it's got graphs and figures that I don't think would make sense unless it was attached for the public to be able to see its full context.
So would I, would I be able to get a copy of that in a email?
Well, what we'll do is we'll attach it to the minutes so that it becomes part of the formal record, and I will then scan it to the three board members so that you have it as well.
So yeah, everybody's going to.
Excellent, thank you.
Everybody's going to get a chance to see it. It's just, it's very lengthy. I don't know if you can see that. And it just, it goes through all the, some of the research that he's done, and also his hope that people will participate in our upcoming budget and really pay attention. So I just want to make that very clear, that this is going to be scanned and is definitely part of our minutes. So Peter, you will get this as soon as Bob.
I'll append it.
Right.
I mean, as soon as Bill consented. Okay? Great. Any questions on that? Okay. That was the only correspondence I had. Was there any other correspondence from anybody up, to anybody else?
I did not have any.
Okay.
I did not have any.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Given, I'm assuming the budget is part of the conversation tonight, is there a possibility that you could give us a sense of what his message was? So in case it has an effect on the possible budget conversation tonight?
Yeah.
Like the overview, I guess, not the entire letter, sort of the broad strokes.
Yep. Yeah, his overview is that over the years, the budget has gone up. There's some questions, I think, about the tax rate. I just received it tonight. Like I said, he's looked into information from the old town reports. He's been talking with Lori Garland, and he thinks that it's very important that people in the community are paying attention and taking part in these discussions. So, which is very important. I know over the years, we've had budget meetings where we get a couple of people that show up, so, and this is everybody's opportunity to weigh in, one way or the other. So that's kind of the gist of, and then like I said, it's a chart. It just shows every year, you know, what the, what the budget's been for the school. I think that pretty much summarizes it.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, unless there's any other questions on that correspondence, we can move on to Old Business Minutes approval. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from November 29?
So moved. Make a motion, motion to approve, but I do have some corrections.
Great. So discussion.
So on page one, Peter, of the minutes from the 29th. Are you on that same page? The very, my name on additions and deletions to the agenda is spelled incorrectly, so P-E-L-T-O-N. Oh, can't hear you, Peter.
I don't have it on screen, but I'll make a note.
Okay, and then on page five, the second paragraph that starts off with Mr. Cumming discussed. The sentence underneath it gets to Vermont, and then that has two Ts. I have one last one after that. And then two more paragraphs down where you have Ms. Pelton discussed. That was, was more inquiring about keeping Ms. Keough in the food service position and having Ms. Corby as a full-time teacher, what that cost was. So, and that's all I have.
About having Erin full-time and Bridgette as.
Inquiring about keeping Ms. Keough in the current food service position and then looking at the cost to having Ms. Corby be the full-time admin. So I was inquiring about the cost of retaining Ms. Keough. So we could look at the difference of keeping her and versus part-time with Ms. Corby versus part-time with, or full-time with Ms. Corby, what those costs look like. Thank you, that's all.
Great, thank you, Abby. Anybody else? Anything you want to add about the minutes? Okay.
Very well done. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. Next, we then will go to Abby, the floor.
Actually, I believe Sarah can take that one.
Okay, great.
Well, we are finally ready to move to phase one. We are looking for the school board to approve, to move forward with the Friends Wyndham Schoolhouse sponsorship multi-purpose room floor renovation. Yeah, so we want the school board approval to move forward, please.
Is that, is that something that, FWS is a separate?
Yeah, well, they're doing it on, that is absolutely appropriate to go ahead and ask. Could I ask a couple of questions, Sarah?
Yes, please.
When will it occur?
Okay, well, it's going to be a multi-part system. So this week, the plan is to start moving the tile tomorrow. After the tiles are done, we need to do a sealant over the concrete, so that'll be Thursday night or Friday, depending on what the school staff needs. During Christmas break is when we'll do the plywood. That's all phase one, and then phase two will be hopefully in February.
And this is the process that Greg, the director of operations, was consulted on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And are we clear that the school will not be using the multi-purpose room tomorrow and Thursday? Do they know that they are, they will not have the ability to use it?
My understanding with Greg, if I can jump in, was that they would be able to use it. We have wiggle room on the timeline. It's just been challenging to, we have to make sure it's approved first before we can move forward with stuff. So really, it's what's going to work best with the school, and the sooner we can start and make it work, the better. So.
Okay, I'm just.
I think that's it.
So you, but you've been in contact with Mickey. We're coming in tomorrow. We're ready to go. Or is this all going to be news to him tomorrow?
Well, it would be after school. It wouldn't be.
Oh.
That, the files and your moves.
Great, yeah, I think that was the, obviously.
That's the question I had.
Yeah.
There, that, that's great. Okay.
Dynamite. So that's amazing that you're starting before the kids are even on break. So any other questions regarding the floor, or, I mean, so we need to make a motion to approve the?
I think that, the way I would take it is you are just informing the board, and you're allowing the board to have an opportunity to have any questions. Greg has informed me of this process. I appreciate very much that the Friends of Wyndham School used the resource of the director of operations to think about how to best accomplish this. And in Greg's own words, he was highly impressed with the amount of energy towards this project. So I don't know who all is involved, but he was impressed with the energy to make this happen. So thank you for listening. Thank you for partnering. Thank you for organizing it when it's not disruptive to the students, and thank you for finding the energy in the community to make it happen. I would feel very comfortable for it just to move forward.
Great, yeah, I just assumed this is, this is your amazing project, so I, yeah, I think we've all been behind it 100%, so I think that's amazing.
Thanks, guys.
So, yeah, so, yeah, you're all good. Okay, so then let's move on to C, News and Notes. Abby.
Thank you. So I was, just wanted to ask if it would be all right if I was the person moving forward to provide the article to News and Notes. We seem to get asked, I know that they had some change with editors and stuff going on, but the request seems to kind of come through very close to the deadline of it being due, and maybe if we just, you know, if I knew I was doing it, then we can plan ahead and make sure that we're getting input from all the other board members at the meetings, and that can all be incorporated into what gets sent into them, and then we're consistently contributing to that without it kind of, I know Beth, you've been a savior in that. You're the one who always comes to the rescue.
Yeah.
So unless there's anyone else that would like to be delegated, I'd just like to offer to be able to do that, and I could do it as long as I knew I was doing it, but what people thought on that.
No, that's, I believe me, it goes out, and it doesn't seem like anybody responds, and so I kind of feel like at the 11th hour, I'm trying to put something together. So by all means, it is, feel free, and if I have something to add, I'll, I typically try to respond to all. I will do that, but otherwise, no, I think that's fantastic, Abby. Thank you.
Right on, thank you. So start off the new year with.
Yeah.
The next, the next addition. I think you've got this one, so.
Yeah.
Awesome, and that's, that's it for that. So thank you so much.
Okay. Great. All right, so let's move on to New Business. And now we're going to turn it over to Lori for the budget second draft.
Lori, I've made you co-host, so you can share anything at any time.
Perfect. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, I am sharing my screen, so make sure you're not, all you're seeing is a blue screen, yes?
Nope, we're seeing a full spreadsheet. Now we're seeing your mail. Now we're seeing the spreadsheet.
Now you're seeing the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So the last time we met, I think the budget was up roughly around 12 and 1/2, 13%. I made some adjustments. There was a calculation error and too many days in the administrative assistant position, so I adjusted that. I also adjusted upward in different places. One was in the fuel, the diesel for the bus. I spoke with Cord and got some calculations there, so I made an adjustment there. So as you all know, the largest cost driver of this budget is the half-time to full-time administrative assistant, and also the food service. In the budget that I have in front of us, and here's the detail, I did not, to Abby's point, I did not put the driving of, the delivery of, the service of the food in this because when we were talking last time, it sounded like Mickey had already had a discussion with both people that providing, that are providing and could be providing service for next year. So that, it could still be up for discussion. So those are the two cost drivers for this 11.51% increase in expenses. Another thing to mention, which I don't think I mentioned last time, and I think Russ, he did point it out, I'm not sure if he pointed it out at our last meeting, but one of the teaching positions is partially funded with ESAR funds this year, but will not be next year. So that's important to remember. It's about $12,000 that is diverted right now to ESAR, so that will come back into play next year. I thought I'd go through the summary here. Just gives an overview, and we get down to a potential tax rate. Does anybody have any questions before I move on to this? Okay. None. All right, so year-over-year expenses up 11.51%. The offsetting revenues down just a little bit. Little lots of Medicaid revenue and a little bit of the small schools grant. So those are two that are always in flux anyway, so that is, those were both reduced. So that gives us your year-over-year education spending up 14.48%. So remember, your education spending is what the tax rate is built on. So the good news is your equalized pupils are up a little bit, almost one, almost one full student there. 19.40 is the fiscal year '24, and this is based on the first run of equalized pupils. We have not had a second run, which is unusual at this point, and a finalized one probably won't come in until next month at this point. The yield, that's the big news, right? So the yield is up 16.3%. So this is what the commissioner is using to balance the ed fund, and it is an increase of up to $15,479. So even though you have an 11% increase in your expenses, your tax rate is actually less. So this is where it gets a little bit confusing for people. So also remember that Wyndham, being part of the union high school for West River, has two different pieces to their tax rate. They have their elementary piece, which is at 62.88%, and that's just, that's taking all the students, a two-year rolling average, and, you know, the students in secondary, the students in primary, and getting a percentage. Secondary percentage is 37.12, so that gives you a tax rate of 162 before CLA. So that's down 6 cents from last year at that same point. Now remember, because you're tied into West River, to their union school, they've only had one look at their budget, right? So their budget could go up, their budget could go down, so that will have an effect on your tax rate as well. That's why these are all estimates at this point. This is, CLA last year was 83.75. We won't hear until mid-January to find out what the CLA will be for fiscal year '24. I, I had a conversation with Allison over in Stratton today, and they're looking at a potential drop down to 60% on their CLA. So not to scare everybody, but I think probably Russ has a pretty good idea of where this CLA will come in, so jump in, Russ, if you have any numbers that you want to share.
My estimate is it'll be in the mid-70s, between 73 and 76.
Okay, all right. But remember, we, you can't control, the school board can't control the CLA, right? And the voters don't vote on a tax rate. They vote on expenses. So that's important to keep in mind. That being said, if the CLA were to stay the same, which we're hearing it's probably not going to, your tax rate for Wyndham could be down 7 cents. Would you think it was, Russ, 73?
Between 73 and 76. In that rate.
A 275. So you can see that that puts a tax rate at 217, which is up 15 cents. Again, the voters don't vote on the tax rate. So the comparisons down below are something I've been doing with all of the districts, and it's just important to keep in mind that this yield of $15,479 is very high. And, you know, we had, at my association's last meeting, Brad James, who is tied into this, is saying that for this year, it might hold, but the surpluses that we've been seeing in the ed fund are not going to hold forever. So that's why I just give you an idea of, you know, what happens when there's a $12,000 yield. What does that look like? Now, the penalty is not in play until 2029 or after 2029, so we don't really have to, you know, think about that at this point. They will put some sort of mechanism in play to control spending. What that looks like, we really don't know at this point. So that's where we are today with the budget as it is and the second draft. Things I wanted to mention, there is a mechanism, and Bill's right there, so he can jump in and, you know, help out with this, but there is a mechanism that Wyndham should consider, the school board should consider putting on their warning, which River Valleys does do at this point. And it authorizes the school board to use surplus funds to offset the tax rate. There is also another article that you could put on as far as moving surplus to the capital fund to protect it. So those are two things that, you know, that Wyndham School Board should consider putting on their warning going forward, so that they have more control over, you know, moving the money when it's needed. And what that first mechanism does is that, you know, you get to the end, June 1st, that's when the budgets need to be submitted by law. That is when the tax rates are fixed. If, if all the budgets come back much higher than anticipated and the surplus is used for other things, i.e. universal meals, then there is a potential that the yield could drop. I don't think it'll drop significantly, but it could drop. In which case, and you know, your CLA will come back, whatever that is, in which case you could use some revenue to basically fix that tax rate.
But what Lori's saying, just to add on, is that by putting a warning on the, on the article for town meeting, you're allowing the citizens, the taxpayers, the voters, to give the board permission to expend up to a certain number, so let's say, I don't know, $50,000, $75,000, after you know what the CLA is, after you know all the budgets that have been passed at town meeting, and after you know what the yield is after both of those things happen. So that then the board could decide in April or May, yeah, it makes sense for us to contribute $48,000 out of the 50 that the public has allowed us to expend, to bring the tax rate from, if the CLA is at 75%, from 217 down to, I don't know, 209, or whatever it happens to be. But it allows that mechanism and that time for the board afterwards. You don't have to do it, but it does give the permission of the board to use those funds, and it's unbelievably transparent to your voters that that's what you are going to do if given the power by the electorate.
Right, because again, remember that the public is voting on expenses, they are not voting on revenues. So revenues can change right up until June 1st.
You got three hands. Lori, we got three hands, so Beth's going to call it out, and we'll see what the questions are.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who went first, so.
Russ.
All right, so Russ, then Michael, then it looks like Abby.
Well, I think there are a couple of things that people should know, and that is the small schools grant, which is a source of revenue on the first page, is going away next year when the equalization studies, new weightings come into play. So that $64,000 or so, that revenue stream is going to go away. And the weighting study is going to kick in, but then, as Lori points out, the yield for $1 of tax might drop from the $15,000 range down to the $12, and one would offset the other. So I think those are elements that we need to consider going forward. And I also think that if we look at the last page of the report that has been sent out to us, we'll see there is, I believe, a $94,616 fund balance, which would be available to us to allocate to various items. But one of the things I'm wondering is, does that $94,000 represent the money after the furnace has been paid for, the propane tank, and the improvements of the school grate room or activity room for the school lunch program?
So I'll go ahead and respond to Russ's question. Two, two responses. First, I'll respond to his question. So the, no, the oil tank happened in actually this fiscal year. So that's the end of fiscal year '22. So it's, I think what we talked about before, we're somewhere in the $60,000 range, $60 to $70,000 range for surplus funds. So that's one point. The other point is, Russ, you are correct about fiscal year '25, and I do want to talk about fiscal year '25. Starting to get some information in on what the new weights, weighting factor. weighting factors look like, and how it would compare to equalized pupils. And, you know, Bill and I went to a training on it last Friday. So Russ is correct. There is a sparsity weight that Wyndham qualifies for. A sparsity and a small schools weight that Wyndham qualifies for. However, one of the highest weighted factors is poverty, and Wyndham does not qualify for a lot of poverty. So the comparison is, if you look at the summary again, in fiscal year '23, and this is the comparison that was used, that Brad sent out to the field, you had equalized pupils of 18.49. And if you compared the equalized pupil after the new weighting factors were applied, it was like right around 20, 20.2, or something like that. So not a huge increase in equalized pupils. However, a decrease in your small schools grant. So it actually drives the, and of course, everything depends on the yield, but it does drive the cost per student up when that happens.
Is the small schools grant $38,000, Lori?
It is.
Okay. So it's part of the 64,000, or 60,800 offsetting revenue? 38,000 of that?
38,750, I see that.
Okay, that will be gone in FY '25.
That is correct, and your equalized pupils are not going up enough to offset that, is the issue. Now, I don't have new numbers, you know, your equalized pupils went up, which is great. So, you know, that 20.2 could be, you know, 21, or, you know, I think it'll go up proportionately. So however, the yield will probably not hold. It may not drop back down to 12, but it won't hold at 50. So just, just, you know, to be totally transparent in what's, what's going on, and to look ahead.
One, one other comment I was going to make is that when we have a full-time employee teacher that isn't subsidized by the ESTER grant, they will be eligible for a full health insurance package of around $30,000. So we're gonna lose 12,000 from the grant, and we're gonna pick up 32,000 in insurance costs for the full-time employee, which is, you know, a significant amount of money.
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yep, those are, those are accurate points. Michael.
Yep, alright, Russ, if you're all set, then I'm gonna go on to Michael.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Great, thank you.
Lori, could you remind me, I believe, if my recollection is correct, that last year they bought back the budget using surplus funds? And I guess I'm wondering why we are asking the taxpayers permission this year versus last year?
We did not. We did not because it-
Didn't buy the tax rate at the end?
No, because the yield was high, and so we did not, we didn't use any surplus funds, which is, you know, the smart thing to do, because the yield is high, which was driving down the tax rate by doing that.
Interesting, because I thought I recalled them discussing how much to keep for capital in case the school bus broke down or whatever, and then they, they reserved some of the money to go for, I wish I could remember, but they reserved some of it for like the bus fund, and I remember them pulling some of that money back to, I probably thought they bought some of the tax rate back. Interesting.
So you can't-
And then I guess-
So just to, to follow up with that first element, the, you can't move money to a, to a reserve fund without the voter's permission. So it, the, the $60,000 of surplus is still sitting in the general fund. So we didn't move any money anywhere. We did, however, put a line item in the budget that was for $10,000, that was $5,000 for the building and $5,000 for the bus, and that could be what you're referring to?
So they didn't buy the tax rate, no?
No.
Interesting. Okay, and then I guess the second part of my question is, so last year, there's money set aside for the bus fund, et cetera, 20 grand, and total, right, 10 for the bus and 10 for something else? And then my question is, I guess, was that a sufficient amount of money? Is that fund building fast enough so that the bus could be replaced in a timely fashion? And are we saving enough money for potential repairs for the building?
So it was $5,000 for the bus and $5,000 for the building last year that was put into the budget and voted on. There was, now there is $10,000 for the bus and $5,000 for the building, because there was a surplus, or not a surplus, I'm sorry, there was $5,000 in the reserve prior to this line item in the fiscal year '23 budget. And I guess to, to answer your question as to, is it sufficient? The bus is approaching five years old, and I would say within the next two or three years, you would be looking at replacing the bus. Court and I spoke about it. You know, he, the bus is in pretty good shape. So, you know, it could last another few years while the money is being put aside.
And what does the bus typically go for?
Yeah, I mean, a bus that size, I think, is in the $80,000 range nowadays.
And we've got 10 saved currently?
Yes, that's right.
So we're about 20 grand short if we keep saving in the current fashion that we are, is that correct?
Right, and you'll have a, a trade-in as well with the bus you have currently.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Michael. I thought, oh yeah, Abby was next, I can't, her hand is not yellow, so it's hard to see. Abby, and that looks like Sarah.
Alright, can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can.
Excellent. So I just wanted to ask, my dang phone. The, if we can add to our next agenda and make sure we get added to have a further discussion about the warning that was discussed, and as well as add the, and continue to add these items on the agenda, because I think they're pretty important for us to decide prior to voting. And to highlight on grants, already, there are multiple items on this budget that are eligible for significant grants. So if community members are, you know, looking to show some interest in supporting that effort, all hands on deck, because there's a lot of stuff that could bring in some money that would completely reduce this and benefit everybody. And then if we are getting small grants, and then they're stopping, is that due to there not being a grant writer? Or is there other circumstances around why that grant is there? And if, how are we getting grants, I guess, how are we getting some of these grants?
The small schools grant is provided by the state of Vermont, and that's under law. That came with Act 60, and with the new passage of Act 127, and Act 173, with the waiting study being implemented, all small school grants are going away. They've added weights that do, as Lori talked about, sparsity and small school size that will be factored into your number of equalized pupils. But you will not get a direct payment of revenue, as you do now, of the $38,000. That's what we're referring to when we talk about the small schools grant.
So thank you, Bill, that's, for that particular grant. But I think at the last meeting, when Lori and I were gonna connect, and you had said something, Lori, like, we don't want to be going after the same ones or something along those lines. And it just kind of confused me, because I'm like, wait a minute, how could, if anybody's going for a grant, there be any kind of competitiveness? If, if there's, you know, I would look at it more as a collaborative. So, yes, I just wanted to throw that out there. And if we can keep those two items ongoing on the agenda, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Oh, could I jump in?
Absolutely.
So I'm making notes, Abby, for the next agenda, so could you just tell me specifically what you would like under the agenda? I've got the warning discussion. Are you, are you referring to what Lori and I talked about with asking the voters if they would like to provide the board the power to use up to a certain amount of money to lower the tax rate after town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and then what were the other issues?
Yeah, so that, that, that conversation to continue, so we're not blindsided by when we get close to the vote, really have some good conversations before we make a decision on how, how we want to take a look at that, of those funds, and how we want to word that warning.
Okay, and what, what else?
And the same thing with grants. I know Bridgette had mentioned, I know she's not here, having some interest in that, so I'm curious if, you know, possibly she's had some time or has future interest in that. But, you know, there's, that could be another collaborative piece. So just kind of curious if we can keep those conversations rolling, we can hopefully get some positive results.
Alright, so I've got two items for the agenda next time. The warning discussion and grants discussion.
Got it, sir, thank you so much.
You're good.
Along with the warning, I think that it may be appropriate to put on the other warning about moving surplus funds into a capital to address what Michael was saying about the building needs, and also the bus, upcoming bus. So if there is any surplus, it can be moved over to a capital fund.
Got it, okay.
Okay, so we have a few more hands up still. Is that, are you good there, Abby?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Yep, okay, so we have Sarah, then Crystal, and then Michael.
I just wanted to piggyback off of what the Peltons were saying, because in front of me right now, I actually happen to have a grant open that's being distributed by the U.S. Department of Energy. And one of the possibilities of grant distribution is, let me word it correctly, purchase or lease of alternative-fueled vehicles to be used by school. The total program funding is $80 million with an M, dollars, and individual awards may vary between $500,000 and $15 million. So if we were to get our act together, get a grant writer, if our district doesn't have one, or if somebody wants to, in the town, or on this meeting, wants to jump in, who's familiar with grants, we could potentially get money for a new vehicle, and then the budget line for that would be no longer necessary. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Sarah. Uh, next we have Crystal.
I just wanted to, and I hope Lori can clarify on this, to Abby's point about the competitiveness, about the grant, it was my understanding that Lori was saying, you know, make sure you let our office know what grants you're applying for, so that they're also not applying for those grants for the school. So then you have two separate entities applying for the same grant for the same school. Is that correct, Lori?
Yes, Crystal, thanks for pointing that out. And, you know, to respond to Sarah, that is, that's the Renew grant that you're looking at, Sarah? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's the one.
Right, so our office is in the process of looking at that grant in terms of, we've already reached out to Efficiency Vermont to potentially partner with some projects. And so our grant coordinator is doing her due diligence on looking at what, what kind of lift is this, right? It's, we're talking about a minimum payout of $500,000. That's a heavy lift for a grant, right? That's not an $80,000 bus grant. So, but it could be put in with other, for the whole SU. It could be part of a bigger conversation. And so that's exactly, Crystal, what I was referring to.
Okay, who's the grant coordinator that you just talked to?
Her name is Liz Francis, and it's just L. Francis, I can, she's on our website too, so she's great, and she can talk through anything with you. But we are looking into it, just so you know.
Okay, so then moving forward, if there were grants that I, as a master gardener, wanted to maybe go for in collaboration with the Friends of Wyndham Schoolhouse in order to benefit the school or the district as a whole, should I talk to Liz first?
It would be great to tell her you're interested in writing something. Sometimes, you know, the, the money goes directly to the school, and so we still have to process payments for that. But ultimately, the superintendent office is responsible for any grants that come into the SU via school district or to the SU directly. So, you know, we're responsible for the compliance of it, and we're responsible for the reporting out on it.
Okay, so just to be clear, it sounds like there needs to be an open line of communication and collaboration so that everybody's on the same page?
Yes, and we have, and we do have a lot of teachers apply for grants, principals apply for grants, you know, Food Connects, you may want to reach out to them. They help us apply for grants, so it's not, it's not uncommon. We just need to be in the know.
Okay, great.
Okay?
Thanks.
Great, alright, Crystal, you're all set?
Yes, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Michael Pelton.
I have a couple of questions. One, I know that Mickey had mentioned that Bridgette might be able to work on some grants. I'm wondering if we're gaining any traction on that? If she's got anything that she is inclined to work on? So I'll start there, I actually, yeah, I'll start there, and then I have a couple more questions after that.
Uh, we do not have an update on that, Michael.
Okay, and then Lori, so I don't have my spectacles on, but I think it looks like the budget is like $49,000 different from last year?
Correct.
Is that correct? I can't really see it. Yeah, okay. So I'm wondering if there are ways that we can, I guess, find some money? So to sort of flat fund the budget? And I know that there's gonna be increases, and I'm wondering if, as a result, maybe we need to look at ways to reduce costs and to increase revenue? One of the ways I'm thinking is, I don't have the facts in front of me, but I know that the SU provides us some money for busing some of the children up for West Hountons. I don't know how much that is, off the top of my head. I think I saw, when I was looking at the budget last, somewhere around $10,000 or $11,000?
It's 11. West River pays Wyndham for the secondary students.
Right, and with the increase of fuel, I'm wondering if it might be appropriate to increase the amount that is coming to Wyndham for that bus service? The increase in fuel is somewhere around, what, 25, 30% or something like that? And if that's the case, that would make that $11,000, somewhere around $14,000 or $15,000? Would that be a possibility?
I can look into it, I'll have to ask Court how many miles it is. And really, it needs to be done on mileage, so I can, I can ask about that.
That would be great, because I think that would be appropriate for, I mean, our costs are going up, and therefore, the supervisory union needs to reimburse us a little bit for those costs, I would believe.
It's not the supervisory union, just to clarify.
Yeah, it's not the supervi- Yeah, it's not the supervisory union, just to clarify. And then I would just let you know that that's with West River cuz it's West River students, so it's not the SU. And I think it's an appropriate question, Michael. I would just be aware that the same question's gonna come back if fuel drops next year. So, you know, it's it's fine to ask, but just be prepared that if fuel drops from three seventy-five to two seventy-five, then they're gonna want a recalculation on what they're paying. So it it's a very valid.
I think that would be appropriate. Right now, fuel's not at three seventy-five, it's like five dollars in change a gallon.
Sure, no, no, no.
I think if it, if it goes back down to three, that'd be fantastic, I'd be happy.
We may find the eleven is cost averaging, so.
Right, that's my.
Right, well, I I think it's something to look at, you know. Right now, I know, I mean, I don't know particularly how many students we transport, but I know that there's at least three or four that we're bringing up the hill. And it seems like it would be appropriate for us to increase the cost if our cost is going up. That's the, that's my two cents on that. Anyway, moving forward, the other thing I'm wondering is we're moving the admin spot to a full-time position on this budget. And therefore, we have an increase in cost based on the fact that we're going to give full-time benefits, I'm assuming, to a full-time position? Whereas right now, we have two half-time employees. So what is the difference if we have two half-time employees and we pay them as two half-time employees versus having one full-time employee?
So when you're referring to to half-time, you're referring to the person who delivers the food and serves it and also the half-time administrative assistant, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so for Wyndham's budget, you only have a half-time. So the person that is being, delivering the food and serving it is actually employed by West River. And just to clarify that it's, what opens up the benefits to any employee is seventeen point five hours a week is what they need to work to be eligible to participate in benefits. Now, most of the time, a half-time person would not opt to do that because the benefits are prorated based on that fifty percent, right? So it would be just too expensive, it would make insurance too expensive. But they are eligible at seventeen and a half hours per week. Okay, so I wanna make sure that's clear. And so they could, they could, and it would cost Wyndham some. It's a little hard when you start talking insurance because it's really up to the individual and it can't be discussed in public. But, you know, they could be eligible for insurance at seventeen point five hours. Um, I just, before we move on, I, Michael, I just wanted to address your question about flat funding the budget. And so that can be done through the surplus money that is sitting in your general fund right now. So just so everybody is aware that that can be used without any article to reduce the expenditure. You you add it to revenue, but it reduces the expenditures.
Lori, I have an additional question too.
Oh, okay.
I'm not quite finished there.
Yeah, just hold on one second, thank you.
So I get to the piece on the insurance. But that being said, my impression was that we were gonna take the full-time admin position and then that full-time admin position was going to deliver and serve the food as well as do the admin position. And that becomes a full-time position as a result and therefore has the full-time hours. I'm wondering what the cost looks like if we keep the funding where it was this year? Where the, the, we have a food food service person that's bringing the food and serving the food and we keep the admin position at the current admin rate of hours where whatever she's working at this point in time? Wondering if there's a significant cost difference or how that look?
Yeah, yeah, no, there's definitely a cost difference and, you know, that can be looked at. I do wanna point out though, as Mickey, Mickey discussed last time, the first draft and why the position was in there full-time was not just about food service, it was also to address safety and security concerns. So I I just wanna make sure we're clear that that is one of the main reasons that your administrator asked for this position to be a full-time position. And the difference is, you know, would probably be, you know, roughly about forty thousand dollars if the person took full-time, full family benefits. Again, I can't discuss that and I can't predict that.
So if we kept the food service person working at the current way that they're working and we kept the admin position at the current way it's working, we would be only nine thousand dollars over the last year budget?
Roughly. Let me just look at that here. Right, so we would be.
If that's, if that's the case, then I would advocate that we as a community support that decision to keep that the same. And also advocate that the fuel is, or the rate that we're getting from the West River District is adjusted accordingly. And that would bring us to almost exactly the same budget numbers as last.
I'm just gonna give a minute. Lori, you all set with that?
Yeah, I, I, yeah.
Yeah, we, before we leave, we'll ask for clarification on what changes to the budget that the board wants us to make to bring back in January. So Michael has made a suggestion, but until, at at the end of, Lori will ask and we will wanna know what is to be changed to bring back to you in January.
Okay, so Michael, are you good for right now?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Right, yeah, cuz we'll, so like Phil said at the end, we'll just go through that and, okay, Russ.
Yeah, if you look on page one of the budget, under direct instruction, number eleven oh one, you'll see item account number five two one one, which has health insurance. And it shows a decreasing from thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars in two thousand twenty-three to twelve thousand four seventy-four in two thousand twenty-four. And keeping those numbers in mind, if you then go over to the second page under the principal's office, item twenty-four ten, you see again the account number five two one one where health insurance last year for two thousand twenty-three was eleven thousand three ninety-four and now it's thirty-seven thousand four twenty-two. There is a net increase when you look at the negative money from the first page and the positive money from the third, and my question is why?
Sure, so it's different employees and what is needed for health insurance at the time of building the budget.
But that does not include full-time benefits for a full-time administrative clerical person. That salary's up thirty-two eight oh eight.
And health insurance is up twenty-six oh twenty-eight.
And that's the health insurance is up, but the the clerical item above that shows fourteen thousand for the two thousand twenty-three budget and thirty-two thousand for the two thousand twenty-four. I'm assuming that's the full-time administrative position that's handled by one of the, one of the parents. But that does not include health insurance.
The, that line, the five one six one, does not include the health insurance. The health insurance is in the five two one one.
And if they had elected to get it, it would mean a thirty thousand dollar increase to the budget?
No, 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 it's built in right there. You can see the increase from one year over the next. Health insurance was eleven thousand three ninety-four and has increased to thirty-seven four twenty-two.
But we've got, we have two full-time employees this year and last year. We only had one full-time employee and two part-time that didn't get insurance. Cuz the, the, the teacher that's subsidized by the Escher Grant did not have full insurance. But next year, she will end up having full insurance.
Potentially, Russ, we're, we're really headed down a pathway that I can't discuss in a public meeting of who has what for healthcare. And I can tell you that I made assumptions and I made assumptions based on what I know at the time of budget.
I, I can appreciate that, thank you, but there is the potential for a significant increase.
Next year, yes.
Okay, you're good, Russ?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Lori? Okay.
Okay, so now it's what do we want Lori to change for the budget for?
Yep, so, Russ, I'm sorry, do you have your hand up again?
No, I didn't take it down here.
Oh, okay, sorry, I just, I looked away from the screen. Okay, so so far Lori, we, so Michael, why don't you, do you wanna go again? About the assistant, the administrative assistant position?
Not today, Russ.
Yeah.
But this is really, the board needs to direct Lori. So you've heard from your citizens.
So Lori, that's why before I said, do you have that? So that came up, or Abby and Russ, are you good with that? Putting the budget back to the half-time assistant?
To see what that looks like?
We need the full-time assistant there.
Just see.
Can we take a look at the numbers?
At the school, we need, we need another full-time person there.
So I believe it'd be nice to look at the numbers showing the part-time, both positions part-time and the increase to what West River is is paying for transportation? Just to see how that impacts the budget, please.
Yeah, cuz we have, we have this one right here, so we're just looking, that way we can have a comparison. Does that sound reasonable?
Whatever you guys want.
I think, I think we have to have that out there. This is a community member that's asked it and we're gonna have other community members that I think should know, you know, what we're talking about. So this way we'll have two. Lori, I'm really sorry to put you through that, but, I'm sorry Lori, real quick, Crystal Corvoo.
Beth, I don't, I don't know if this is something that is very time-sensitive. But my suggestion would be to wait on deciding this until you talk to Mickey. Because there's, the food service person may not do it next year. So I think that's why it was decided to turn Bridget's position into a full-time. I understand the cost of the health insurance, but I just, I kinda think you guys should talk to Mickey before you make a decision.
Oh, absolutely.
If that makes sense.
Totally, yeah, we are not making, and there's way too many questions up in the air. So we're not making any decisions tonight. But even just for Lori's benefit, which I know this this adds to your workload, but if we can have this for the next meeting and maybe even that, not including the food service person? And I'm so, sorry Lori, does this make it difficult?
No, 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 I think I understand. So you just want a second scenario that looks at putting the admin assistant back to half-time and then adding in a food service delivery that would be, it would be a purchase service just like you're purchasing the food because the employee actually works for West River.
Okay, oh, cuz that's, okay, cuz that's what Bridget would be then therefore, okay, yes.
No, no.
Nope, nope.
That's the other person would be the purchase service.
Okay.
The half-time admin would still be in the Wyndham budget.
Yes, right, yep. Does that sound reasonable to Abby and Russ? So we'll just have.
It's not even considered.
Yes.
Yes, and I feel we kinda moved to adding the position and removing another with also those same concerns. So I just wanted to, I think it's important to look at the numbers, right? It's not about, if nothing changes employment-wise and we're able to manage the services that we're pretty, that we have currently going with the changes that'll take place with that, but what that number will look like and the addition to bus cost there, we could be in a very good spot. So it's worthy to just see what those numbers look like and then that's not a whole heck of a lot of change. But it's something to consider and just take a look at for the number's sake and we can still have the conversations with grant writing and maybe come up with additional funding to support financing, financing that kinda stuff. But I think budget-wise and just number crunching, it's fair to just take a look at what those numbers are without changing a thing and I don't think that's really offensive to anybody cuz it's just looking at numbers, so, thank you.
Great, and and looking at them with Mickey here would be good.
Okay, that's a good direction.
Okay, okay.
Any other?
Any other questions about the budget? If not, we wanna give Lori, Lori a break.
I have one, a couple of more questions.
Oh, about the budget?
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, Mike, are they for Lori?
Um, well, no, I guess it's not directly for Lori. I noticed that there is a couple of increases. I apologize, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, I'm cooking dinner at the same time. Uh, but I noticed there's some significant increases in supplies. And that's off the top of my head, but it was like, the budget was like three hundred and thirty-three dollars and then the actual spent amount was somewhere around three or four thousand dollars. And the budgeted for next year is a thousand dollars. I'm wondering if we are, A, shortchanging ourselves, if we really need to spend more and if it's not, you know, maybe it's not four thousand dollars, but maybe it's also not a thousand dollars?
I, I don't remember what line item we're on here.
So I'm looking at fifty-six eleven, you're talking about general supplies or?
Yeah, general supplies, yep, that's for instance, there was, yep, exactly.
So I see actual.
So it's, we budgeted three, the actual for twenty-two is three hundred and thirty-six and then twenty-three actual is four thousand two hundred and fifty. And then it's the budget, we budgeted a thousand dollars, now we're also proposing to budget a thousand dollars, but that's like a huge difference in in costs. So I'm wondering if we were hammed up a little bit somewhere and we should be either budgeting more or we spent way too much and we should be watching what we're buying or something went way up, I mean, I don't know. But it's like a huge difference. I don't know, it doesn't seem like a lot, but like that's four thousand dollars that we didn't plan on. And we're talking about a budget that's like forty-nine thousand dollars more. So, you know, maybe that's something we should think about. There's probably other instances like that, but I really haven't spent that much time looking at it.
I see, okay, so fifty-six eleven, all right, under operation of buildings.
Fifty-six eleven?
Yeah, so this is, you know, there's some WW building supplies, which I would imagine is probably went to the kitchen. Remember that the board approved up to twelve thousand dollars, I think it was, or, you know, the kitchen area, there is the all-purpose room? So I see some money for WW, I'm assuming those are for the doors that Greg built, uh, which was a thousand forty-seven, so I think your four thousand dollar are some one-time costs.
Okay, that makes sense.
All right, good, good, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't shorting ourselves for next time.
Yeah, I think they're, they really are, you know, the normal supplies I see, you know, swish, a hundred and nine, you know, that type of thing. So I think the thousand dollars is appropriate unless there's other projects that I'm not aware of.
Okay, you, you good with that?
If the building was to be painted or something like that, would that come out of that same fund or is that coming from somewhere else?
It would come out of the building ops, but it would probably come out of. It would come out of the building ops, but it would probably come out of the five-four-three-one where that thirteen thousand is and you can see that our year-to-date expenses there is thirty-two and that's the boiler. So that's over budget by twenty-one thousand dollars, which we expected. Okay, that would be the line item, so.
Okay, all right, you're good, Michael? Abby, do you have your hand up? No? Okay, okay, this sounds like we've made a lot of good, yeah, headway with this budget. So, thank you Lori very much.
Sure.
Obviously, if anybody has any other questions, just please feel free to reach out.
So it'll be important to remember that the meeting in January is probably the meeting you're going to need to approve your budget. Yep, so just be aware that that is, that is the moment. You're going to have to make some decisions.
Yep, well, we certainly have some great information, so thank you Lori very much and thank you everybody else for all of your input because that's exactly what needs to happen. Okay, so then we're going to move on from the budget to, well, we, we don't have, we have a principal's report, but we don't have a principal right now, so.
Yes, I'll, I'll just sit in for Mickey. He sent to the three board members a request for second semester professional development days. In the West River District, they've been doing it for five years where they pick three or four months. Believe they're going to do it February, March, April, and May where there's a half-day, one Wednesday a month. And your principal, Mickey, is asking to have Wyndham take those same days and inform the parents. If the board says yes, then Mickey could inform the parents with, you know, a minimum of two months prior notice. It would be in alignment with the West River District. It would allow Mickey and Natalie and Bridget to have a half-day of preparation once a month. They've been found to be very, very valuable in the West River District and so your principal is asking the board if you'd be willing to do that.
Do you need action on that?
We'll need a motion.
All right, can I get a motion for professional development, please, for three half-days?
Make a motion.
Make a motion that we allow Mickey and the other staff three half-days of professional development.
All right, Abby, you want to second that?
I second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, hearing none, others in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, great, thank you very much. Next is financials, I just have two. One is payroll. No, of course I don't have it. Let's see, eighteen is just payroll and nineteen is just all of our basic services. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary. Just our internet, phone, plowing, pre-K tuition, let's see. Are you guys still getting these? Are you getting these from the WCSU?
I am not getting them.
Okay, so it would make it a lot easier if everybody got them and then you can just peruse it at your leisure. Otherwise, construction paper, Sharpies, watercolor pens, and then our blanket payment to the WCSU. So I'll take a motion to approve the financials.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
Aye.
I see, let's see, Michael, your hand's up, were you still looking to?
No, just scanning.
Just go down because you're cooking too? Double duty, all right, great, thank you, let's see.
Fuel oil.
Next is, well, we're going to do the superintendent's report and then we'll do that, Russ.
All right, my report will be brief, I provided the board with a hard copy. Just the WCSU budget was passed in November. The average assessment to individual boards was two point three-three percent, which is very common with our historical average, which is right around two percent. And I just wanted to speak to what Beth had mentioned earlier, that tonight will be our last night with our minute-taker, our recording secretary, Mr. Peter Barris. And I just wanted to take a moment to thank him for his professionalism, his observation of the work that you all do here at Wyndham, the accurate recording for not only future discussions, but for posterity. He does his work immaculately, dedicatedly and has a real view of how participatory democracy works here in Southern Vermont. And he works for four different boards and we're going to miss him greatly. So Peter, I just wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to thank you at this moment.
Thank you, Peter. He's going to have some tough shoes to fill.
And then Abby, just to let you know, as the clerk, until we hire somebody new, taking minutes will fall to your responsibility. And we have posted for this position and we will continue to look for a position to serve. But if anybody has any knowledge or interest in doing minutes for the Wyndham Board, they can just contact Mickey or myself. And Beth, if you could just see if Peter had a moment, if he wanted to say anything?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, my, my Google Drive just crashed in the middle of that, so it's all in the outer space. First of all, thank you all for being the people that you are. You don't understand how exceptional you are in this world. You really have something special in the WCSU. And not only did you have this amazing superintendent here, but you're getting another one. So, golly, just keep going, don't stop, you're doing what needs to be done. Also, I wanted to add that I'm willing to assist in getting started for whoever follows me. There is a Google Drive account and there's a whole set of procedures that I've spent about ten years developing that will make life a lot easier.
Wow.
Yeah, that's all for me.
That's awesome, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, we're going to miss you, that's for sure.
I'm going to miss you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be a civilian.
Well, hopefully you're moving on to do some fun stuff.
He's writing a book.
Oh, wow, okay, oh, so you're just going to continue writing, fantastic.
It's not about you.
Nice, great, okay. Just real quick, because with the principal's report, there, as I said, there is a principal's report. Can you scan it and does it need to? I don't know, it might be important to Mickey.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, Russ, all right, next is fuel oil.
I'd like to make a motion at the school board to prove that the school can sell the contents of the fuel oil tank behind the school to the town of Wyndham at a time and a point that they would like to take it at a price that will be determined at a fair market price.
Okay, is this something, did you talk to the town about that? I, it's an amazing idea.
Lori, I, I've already talked to Kathy.
Okay.
And I mentioned to her I was going to do it and I asked her to get the price and she didn't do it. So I got the price this morning and sent an email to all the school board members. So there's approximately nine hundred gallons in the tank and it's probably worth three thousand dollars. And the town can use it for the town office, the town garage, or the meeting house.
Yep.
And it's just authorization to allow us to sell the fuel that's in the tank to the town for whatever purpose they want to use it.
Yep, no, I, I understand that, I just want to be sure. Michael, you know, since you're, oh, sorry, Lori, were you first?
Yeah, we need to find out.
So Lori and then Michael.
Russ, I just wanted to make sure you knew about the mistake that Dead River made and they actually put two hundred more gallons into that tank?
When?
It was a couple of weeks ago now.
November twenty-ninth? Yeah, November twenty-ninth, I got an invoice copy for it.
Okay, so, yeah, so they, Greg has been trying to work with them because they did it without a PO in place or a contract or anything, so it's really their responsibility. So if you could just, you know, touch base with Greg? Just to make sure that we're not, you know, getting them to come pump it out at the same time you're filling it to the town.
Yeah, the, the filling that I had was in April and it was six hundred and seventy gallons. And I didn't, and then she was looking it up today. She said that November twenty-ninth was another fill, so we must have at least a thousand gallons in there. So it's a matter of getting, getting our money back from somebody and Dead River told me when I called them that they would not pump it out.
Okay, so we need to clarify.
I'll check with Greg.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, and Michael?
Well, I think it's a fantastic idea. I cannot speak for the select board, I am a select board member, but I can't speak for the board as a whole. The only thing that I would be cautious of or thoughtful of, I should say, that you want to make sure that you're selling it for the cost that you paid for it and the, whatever the fee is for pumping it. Don't know how that looks in terms of what the quote-unquote fair market value is, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure that, I guess I just want to make sure that you're covering your bases there, that's all I can.
Michael, the, the general practice in the real estate business is that you transfer it at fair market value. Whatever it is, whatever the current price is, that's how you transfer the value. And the pumping out and pumping in would be covered by the person receiving it.
Okay, Abby, I'm sorry, do you have your hand up?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing is a lot of not data. I would prefer to move and make a decision knowing specific numbers. So maybe it'd be more worthy to add this onto the agenda for the next meeting so that we can get, you know, set numbers. We are going to have this transaction for XYZ amount on this date and we know it's not messing with what Greg's got going on. It just seems kind of messy and we should make it a little more clean, if that makes sense.
Okay, so Russ, you're going to talk with Greg, it sounds like, so we'll get that squared away?
That's, that's right, I'll talk to Greg. But what happens is fuel oil changes, the price changes daily.
Yeah.
And we, we cannot get a specific number in advance because the price will change tomorrow or the day after. So we have to have a reasonableness to the motion that whatever the fair market value is at the time of the transfer is what will be paid.
Why don't you sell it to the town for the cost that you paid for it? And maybe we'll pay for the pumping.
We paid more for it per gallon than what the current market price is.
So, but with that, does it?
Maybe the case, but at least you're covering your cost.
The point is, it's, Michael, it's in the ground and it's wasting asset. Whatever the market price is on the time of transfer is that what we're selling it for. We don't know what it's going to be at that particular day and you can't get a specific number. And in the real estate industry, whatever the closing date is on a piece of property, whatever the value is of fuel oil in the tank is what they do the exchange for. And that's the way I worded it. At the fair market value, the day that it's pumped is what we will sell it to the town for.
But we don't know the day that it's pumped, which could fall in and mess up Greg's plan. So we have to confirm that there's nothing going on with that and that that number doesn't change after that happens and that accidental pump is corrected.
Okay, can I interject here real quick? So we know Russ is going to talk to Greg, let's just start there, just to make sure that we're on the same page. And it sounds like perhaps this is something we need to bring forward to the select board, which is not going to be this coming Monday, but the following Monday, does that sound? Michael, can you? Sorry, Michael, can you chime in on that as to when the next select board meeting is?
Yeah, we did, we just had our meeting, so yep, it's not this coming, it's the following.
Okay, so can we just start with these small steps? Russ is going to talk with Greg and then I can, Michael, I can call the, the select board chair and ask them to put it on the agenda, or do you want to do that?
I can talk to them, it's fine, yeah. It'd be nice if one of the, um, hold on, just, hold on just a second. It'd be nice if one of the school board members would like to come present the idea to the select board, if that'd be appropriate.
I, I will present the idea to court because if you talk to them about this business, it's town business and you're, you're violating the open meeting law.
Yep, no, yep.
Let me talk to, let me talk to the board.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't talk to them, Russ, I would just ask them if they're on the agenda. But we may absolutely talk to them, I think that'd be great.
Okay, great, thank you, yeah, I think that was Michael's suggestion that a school board member come for that very reason. So that's fantastic, so Russ, thank you, because yeah, we definitely, if, if we have this to sell, then we need to be doing that. Great, any other discussion about the fuel? Okay, thank you. Looks like that's it, I think we got through a lot of stuff and all having to do with money. So we need as much as we can get right now. So thank you, oh, Crystal, did you have your hand up?
I thought I had seen on the agenda, was there a discussion about a part-time employee that was brought on?
Nope.
Oh.
No. No, there was not.
Okay.
Yeah, do you have a, do you have a copy of the agenda?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
I do.
Yeah, okay, no.
Oh, never mind, I misread it. It was the professional development.
Oh, yeah. Yes, I see, I, I see how that could happen, dynamite. All right, so we have some work to do, obviously Lori's got a lot of work to do, which I just can't begin to tell her thank you enough. And thank you, everybody, for all of your great contributions. So we're going to meet again January seventeenth, six o'clock in the year two thousand and twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Yep.
Twenty-three.
Okay, unless you got a DeLorean, you're going back in time.
Happy New Year!
Yeah.
Happy New Year and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
He's a good number.
Thank you, Peter.
So I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I'll second it. Any discussion, others in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye, aye.
Great, thank you.